Okay, we're going to call to order the regular city council meeting of November 27, 2023. And before we call the roll, we are going to swear in our four members of our new city council. And we are gonna, we have the honor to have Judge Lisa Asadorian to say a couple of words and is going to swear in everybody. So Judge, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Pardon my backside. This is actually a very exciting evening because we're so grateful for the people who've given their service for years, but it's refreshing and it's invigorating to have a new perspective and some new eyes and maybe a new vision. So we welcome a couple of new people this evening. And when you think about it, you are us and we are you. And we're all in this together. And everyone's here for the good of our community. And this is a wonderful and blessed community. So if you would allow me to, I wish you the very best. I pray for all of you. I pray for your wisdom, your sound judgment, and your leadership as we go forward tonight and all of your days ahead for your term of office. God bless you all.
Okay, so first, we're going to have Christian Hauser. So Christian, if you go around, if you'd like to have your family come up with you for the swearing in.
This is your sister.
Wow, that's pretty good there.
Okay, you'll raise your right hand and you'll repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Christian Hauser.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully perform
That I will faithfully perform.
Duties of city council member
Duties of city council member.
For the City of Rochester
The City of Rochester.
For a term expiring November 24, 2025.
For a term expiring November 24, 2025.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Roger, do you want to come up?
All right. All right. Ms. Trent, please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Nolan Trent.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully perform
And I will faithfully perform.
Duties of city council member
Duty of city council member.
For the City of Rochester
For the City of Rochester.
For a term expiring November 22, 2027.
For a term expiring November 22, 2027.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Mr. Gould.
You want me to stand up there?
Mr. Gould, where's your password?
I'm going solo.
All right. Mr. Gould, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I to state your name.
I, Doug Gould.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully perform
And that I will faithfully perform.
Duties of city council member
Duties of city council member.
For the City of Rochester
For the City of Rochester.
For a term expiring November 22, 2027.
For a term expiring November 22, 2027.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
A judge can do whatever they want.
And look, she's back. All right, Ms. Jones, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Debbie Jones.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully perform
And that I will faithfully perform.
Duties of city council member
Duties of city council member.
For the City of Rochester
For the City of Rochester.
For a term expiring November 22, 2027.
For a term expiring November 22, 2027.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Well, it's time to get down to the business of getting down to business. And my favorite words in law school were "class dismissed," but I'm not.
Thank you, Judge Lisa.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
All right. Be blessed, everyone. All right. And thank you in advance for your good works for this awesome, awesome city. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next order of business, which is a tradition in our city, is I pass the gavel to these
Roll call.
Roll call. There you go. Thank you. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
Gould.
Here.
Hauser.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Sage.
Here.
Trent.
Here.
You guys are now official.
Yeah.
Okay, so as I was saying, I pass
Pledge allegiance.
I've never done this before.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everybody. And thank you all for coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
As the crowd disappears.
Make sure you enjoy your dinner.
Yes.
Have a nice evening.
Okay, so the public comment is to pass the gavel to the city attorney for the election of mayor and mayor pro tem. Mr. City Manager.
Good evening, all. This part of the meeting, we are going to take nominations. Nominations are now in order for the office of the mayor of the City of Rochester for a term expiring November 2024. Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. I nominate Stuart Bixson for office of mayor.
Stuart Bixson, having been nominated for the position of mayor, are there any other nominations for the position of mayor? Seeing none, we'll close the nominations. Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
And now we will do the same for the position of mayor pro tem. And so we're taking nominations for the office of mayor pro tem for a term expiring November 2024. Mayor Bixson.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Nancy Salvia for mayor pro tem.
The name of Nancy Salvia has been placed in nomination for the mayor of the position of mayor pro tem. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I will close the nominations. Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote?
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Madam Pro Tem is reelected once again. I will now relinquish my position and back to the mayor.
Thank you very much, everybody. It's a great honor to serve as mayor of the City of Rochester, and it's also a great honor to be voted in by my peers on the city council. So thank you, and I promise to do my best to lead this city forward.
Thank you. I would just like to echo those comments. It's, we are so blessed to live in this amazing city and to be part of its governing structure. So look forward to serving with this excellent city council for this next year. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we have an excellent city council, and I want to congratulate again all the people who got elected. I know you did a lot of hard work and a lot of time, sweat, effort, putting yourself out there. And thank you. And I believe our city council is strong, and I'm looking forward to the next two years of moving forward. So thank you. Is there any public comment? I know that on the, we were going to do a presentation of the Michigan Municipal Treasures Association, but I guess there's been some illness, so we're going to do that at the next meeting. Also, we have some unfinished business from the last meeting in recognition to a former council member, Ann Peterson, who is here tonight. So we have that resolution recognizing her. I'll read it briefly. Whereas Ann Peterson was elected city council in November 2015 and served through November 2023. Whereas Ms. Peterson is a proud resident, has been committed to making Rochester a great place to live. Whereas Ms. Peterson contributed her time, energy, and passion to the city's boards and commissions, including the City Beautiful Commission, Planning Commission, DDA, RAR, Historical Commission, Infrastructure Committee, Budget and Finance Committee, Dinosaur Hill, Sister City Committee, Pink Creek Trailway Committee, and these are not all at the same time, Facilities Committee, Grant Committee, Dementia and Age Friendly Committee, and the Residential Property Task Force. Whereas Ms. Peterson also served on the Michigan Municipal League's Economic Development and Land Use Committee. Whereas Mrs. Peterson worked to expand her knowledge by completing the Greater Rochester Leadership Program, the Citizens Police Academy, Citizens Fire Academy, and the Master's Citizen Planner Program. Whereas the City of Rochester appreciates and respects Ms. Peterson for her devotion and dedication to the city. Therefore, it be proclaimed that I, Stuart Bixson, and the city council, the mayor of Rochester, hereby express their appreciation to Ms. Peterson for her years of public service. So thank you, Ann.
Thank you, ma'am. Stuart, I'll take a picture. I'll send it to you, Ann.
Is there any further public comment tonight? Brian, anything online?
There is none. Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. As a consideration of the minutes, the regular meeting of November 13, 2023, and Ms. Hauser, Mr. Hauser and Ms. Jones, you are able to vote on that if you choose to. Yes.
So moved?
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
I second.
This is second by councilmember Trent. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. First is a consideration request to approve the annual Rochester area hometown Christmas parade. I think it's probably time to do that. I know, Maggie, you were on pins and needles there. Next is consideration of a special event application from the Rochester PSD to hold the Caroling in the City Event on Sunday, December 10, 2023, the WAC MS Rochester 2024 Event, and the Second Annual Frozen Paw 5K Event. Is there a motion? Some moved as presented. Motion by councilmember Sage.
I second.
Second by mayor, councilmember Trent.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
And we have Maggie from the chamber today. Would you like to say a few words about the Christmas parade? Or anything else you would like to?
I can say anything.
Yes.
Mayor Bixson, you gave me a mic.
Well, we can turn it off up here, too.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to take a moment and I'm glad I'm here tonight. Okay. To congratulate all the new faces that are up on council and to say goodbye to some of the other faces that we'll miss greatly that have sat up on council and given their time and treasure for the city. So congratulations. I look forward to working with all of you again throughout the years. Mayor Bixson, I'm so happy I don't have to go back to the office tonight and change signage for cars. So on this coming Sunday at 2:00, we will put down the Rochester area hometown Christmas parade. We'll march down Main Street again. We have over 80 entries. Chief George is responsible for the weather. He's doing very well right now. There's a 60% chance of no rain that day, so I know he's going to be working on that for me in the next couple of days. But we look forward to this event. Every year, I can tell you that my favorite time is at 6:00 in the morning when I drive down Main Street, and Main Street is lined with blankets and chairs, and it's quiet, and there's no one around. And I know the community loves the parade also. So we look forward to seeing all of you there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Maggie.
Thank you, Maggie. Okay, there's no old business, no table items tonight. On to public hearing. First is a public hearing on the use of the Community Development Block Grant Funds. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to our new councilpeople and returning councilpeople. I look forward to a fun, fun couple of years coming up here. So tonight, we're having our scheduled public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant for this upcoming year for our new members. Every year, we get a stipend from, for the Community Development Block Grant dollars. And then we have to have, hold a public hearing. We go to the planning commission. We talk about what our goal is with those dollars for the year. So there's a limited use of funds. It's usually for handicapped accessibility. There's different categories you can use it in, but we've been focusing on our park paths in the, in our municipal park over the last few years. There was a million dollars identified about, I'm going to say, seven years ago to replace all those paths. We've been systematically putting some of our own city dollars in during budget cycle. And then we have been programming the Community Development Block Grant Funds to do that. We try to separate those two items sometimes because when you use Community Development Block Grant Funds, you have to use other regulations, this thing called Davis Bacon, where you have to pay a prevailing wage, et cetera. So sometimes we'll separate the two projects so that we can, there's a lot more paperwork with the federal dollars, but we appreciate it. And then that works out great. So every year, we seem to get 50,000 to 80,000 more thousand on top of the block grant money to get through the park. We're getting close to three quarters of the way through. Jeremy's going to go over where specifically we're asking for the segment this year. Jer?
Hello, council. So as you know, we've been working on the butterfly garden for the last few years. It looks great, but the third phase of that garden is a pergola next to kind of that dirt pathway in that corner of the park. So what we were proposing, we use these CBD G money for this year, was to formalize that pathway. It's been a dirt path as long as I can remember, and it's always connected that portion of the parking lot to the main loop that we have in the park. And this will allow us to have an ADA pathway that's cement and a curb cut at that portion of the parking lot, so people don't have to walk all the way past the sun dial to get to an ADA accessible ramp. So that's kind of the project. And then on top of that, we will be trying to fund the extra pergola that's that third phase. But this CDBG money is a really great resource that we have to finish that portion and add on to our existing park path. So it's pretty straightforward, but I'm here to answer any questions if anybody needs any.
Councilmember Trent?
It's not a question. It's just a yay. I'm excited that it's happening after working with the Butterfly Garden team. There is such a thing. And for the past few years, I'm excited that it's going to come to fruition and make it easily more accessible for handicapped and other, you know, anyone, actually. Yeah, it'll be nice. Thank you.
Of course.
Mr. Seem, Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Thank you. So I think this location is excellent. It's excellent use for these dollars. You know, providing that ADA accessibility there is fantastic. So I'd make a motion to approve the use of the CBD. No? Oh, for the public hearing. I make a motion to schedule the public hearing.
No, no. We scheduled it for tonight.
Oh.
I was just going to start it. So we are, so now we are going to open the public hearing at 7:22. Is there anybody from the public who would like to comment on this? We will close the public hearing at 7:23. Now, if you would like to make a motion.
We need a motion for the, to authorize the administration to use the CBD funds for the Butterfly Garden path.
Support. Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Salvia, support by councilmember Gould. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Next on, there's not any legislative deliberation tonight. On to reports and regular business. Consideration of extension of the parking lot lease for the Masonic Building parking lot. Mr. City Manager, do you want to give us a brief overview?
Yeah, I'm going to have Mr. Kraut explain the terms of this, and then I'll give you a couple more comments. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you. Before you, for consideration is a, an extension of the Masonic Building parking lot lease that the city currently has. In 2014, the city entered into a lease for the parking lot, and that's the, pertaining to a portion of 316 to 320 Walnut Street. It was for initial term of 10 years, starting January 1, 2014. And so the initial 10-year period is set to expire at the end of December of this year. Inside the lease, it does give the city the right to renew the lease for up to two five-year periods, so long as the notice is given at least 30 days to the landlord before the expiration of the term. The, as to the rent, the initial rent was for $5,000 per year, and that was for the first five years. Then the next five years, it increased to $5,250 per year. And if the city wanted to extend it, then the rent would increase another 5%. So the yearly payment would be $5,512.50 per year for each of the next five years. Talking with the administration, the administration wishes to extend this lease for another five years. Therefore, the action sought tonight would be to approve the city manager to provide that notice to the Masonic Building Association of Rochester, indicating the city's intent to extend the lease for an additional five-year term.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just a couple of fun facts. So back in the day, this, the Masonic group came to us, and they were having a hard time keeping people out of that lot. We had a need for extra parking. So we entered into this original agreement. We spent the money to put in the meters in the lot. We, the city gets the money for the meters. At one point, remember, the DDA controlled the parking lots. When that flipped over back in, I think, the end of 16 and beginning of 17, that the city took back all the parking lots, including maintenance, but we got also all the funds from the meters on those lots. And I just want to remind everybody that in the DDA budget, every year, they don't have to, but they put $50,000 of their dollars into the city's parking fund as a contribution. Just, you all know what happened during COVID. They put in 1.4 million. But on a continuing basis, every year, they put 50,000 more into the parking for the, just for the convenience of being a team member in the parking. So we, they do participate in that. In this case, though, it's our parking lot that we use, and we monitor and we maintain. We sealed it and striped it last year, like we did all the other lots. So, and staff isn't, we think we need that lot. We actually work with the business owners, and a lot of the permit parking people were getting there first in the morning. And that's pretty close parking, just the back of some of those businesses. So we went and made, I think, 85% of those spaces cannot be for permits. So they, the permit people have to go deeper into the lots so that we free up the closer parking for the patrons of the building. So, and those signs stay to this day. So that would, the Masons were good with that. I think they get three parking spaces, passes if they need them during the year for their meetings, et cetera. But other than that, that's pretty much the background.
Councilmember Trent?
Yes, I really appreciate that background that you gave me, but please bear with me as I go down memory lane on parking program costs in the downtown. In 2014, the new street parking meters were put in for $205,000. In 2015, the new parking structures were built, and we'd been working, there had been work done on that for years and talked about for years. And the goal of the parking committee was to not, what they said at the time, was not to only pay, the structures to pay for themselves, but produce a profit that would cover everything and more. And that projection to make a profit really didn't come to improve fruition. And we, and we also had the pandemic. The first unplanned parking cost was in 2022 when we had to replace the street meters for $275,000 because of the cost to move from 3G to 5G, including all hardware and software. In the last meeting, the city council voted to pay for more unplanned expenses of $194,000 gate, dollar gate replacement and technology and equipment in the parking structure, and $50,000 for fiber optics improvements. I understand that it isn't anyone's fault. These were, these are just the facts. Now we have this five-year lease for the Masonic parking lot lease renewal. And then there's also talk of the parking lots needing repaving. And then there will be more discussion on putting money aside each year for more maintenance and updates. And I do appreciate the DDA's $50,000, but I have some, I just, just bear with me. The Masonic Temple Parking Lot Lease was a previous expense the city had not, had paid for in the past 10 years. Is that correct? Yes. Because of the unplanned costs that have been coming up, I'd like to have some more time before voting on this request. I understand the projection of making a profit has yet to happen. Based upon that, I want to explore it a shared expense with the Downtown Development Authority, whose area it benefits the most, and how we can partner with these unplanned expenses with our respective budgeting going forward. I served on that board for many years, and I know that shared expenses were part of the city and the DDA partnership as they went back and forth. To confirm, I am pro-business, and I know that the city, the city council are as well. I can speak from being a small business owner in that district for over 20 years, and my home is in the district as well. So as a previous council member, Mark Ulbrich has said, this is a tree-legged, three-legged stool, and we're partners in making the city a success, the DDA, the PSD, and the city. In this case, we must regulate parking and responsibly manage the cost to our residents, downtown businesses, and visitors. And I would like to be a part of a, I'd like this to be part of a bigger unified plan. And especially with two members coming on, I'd like them to understand the full scope, as I have will too. I don't have any ideas written in stone, but I think we need more time to look at this. And I want to make a motion to table this until the next meeting, when there has been more time to assess all the costs of
So extending, table on this to the first meeting in December would put the city beyond the timeframe for extending.
That was gonna be my question, is when does the notice requirement trigger? And so it's December 1st, so.
Yes.
Councilmember Trent?
Well, so it, that would mean that we didn't get but three or four days to take a look at this, or?
Totally separate issues you're talking about. So this is a lease for a parking lot that we lease now, that we put improvements into. We get money from it. I don't know if that has anything to do with, you want the DDA to share in parking, that's a whole different discussion. But if we give this up, they will, Cordenoff will lose our meters, we won't, we'll lose the revenue, and we won't have the parking. So, especially coming up with big bright light show, that would be their parking lot again. So I would like to separate these, don't, don't have any problem with your request, but that should be during goals and objectives if we could.
Dirty goals and objectives?
Councilmember Jones?
I just have a quick question. When I was looking at the information, so they do not pay taxes on that property, correct? So we're losing income and taxes, and then we also have the expense of that.
They've never paid taxes on that property.
They never did, because they're a...
501(c)(3), correct. Yeah, so they, good question.
Because it was written up like they were not paying taxes just on that.
They never have, they've owned it for other, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Sage?
So I wanted to clarify as well. So this is the second of a five-year lease, correct? So Councilmember Trent's point.
First five.
Thought we signed this agreement in 2014, correct?
Right, it's 10-year agreement, and then.
It was a 10, so we're extending to five. Okay, so it's been 10 years. And now it's, how many days? So it's not like we didn't know this was coming up. And I don't think it's unreasonable to continue the discussion, but now we're being forced to make a decision based on a timing issue on when to discuss this. I, it's kind of hard to swallow.
Mr. Mayor, through the mayor, I understand they just sent us this. It's been buried in paperwork from 10 years ago. So it wasn't on anybody's radar, but again, it's, we don't have to have that parking lot, but it's, it's gonna cause issues. So, again, I think there, I understand the gravity of what you're saying, but two separate issues. You're talking about asking the DDA to participate in parking when that's, their budgets are set for another year. So we'll have that discussion another time.
And if I could follow up on that? So the mission of the DDA is to support the infrastructure that supports the merchants within the business district. I can think of nothing better than parking to be one of those support functions. So I'm on a struggle here where we're basically being told we can't discuss this, right?
It's a different topic, so.
I think, I think, well, I just, I think this is a topic we can discuss, but it sounds like in this particular situation, we may have our hands tied on this one issue.
Okay.
And that's what.
Or we could let it go and then try to renegotiate a lease again. But again, you do remember that the DDA puts aside $250,000 for infrastructure. Their mission, like you stated, Councilmember Sage, that is part of their mission, part of their mission. And they do participate. We just spent their money on roads and underground and lights. They just spent a million dollars in the last five years on lights. So I want to make sure everybody who knows that's watching, they do participate in infrastructure. It's not just, they don't throw parties, they don't do that things. It's infrastructure, they're saving money for a project, obviously, but I think it's fair to note that.
Mayor Portem Salvia?
Thank you. So there's two issues here. One is a legal issue. Do we continue a lease or not? This is a good lease, this is a good deal for the city. We get 29 spots in our parking system that we're all very sensitive, very emotional around. Parking in the city is a big deal. Who pays for this $5,500 is a separate question. This has been part of the parking budget, which we have always stated the parking system should be, the people that use the system should pay for the system. So we don't make money on the parking system. The cost for the parking system should be included in that budget. This $5,500, I mean, the majority of it has already been in the parking budget. So in my mind, these issues need to be separated. We need to have other discussions around parking budget, DDA. But I don't think we want to lose this lease for the city. This is a good deal.
Councilmember Hauser?
Sure. You know, and I'm thinking, I understand both sides of the argument here about the noticing, but my concern is that if we don't renew, we're never going to get this price structure back. I mean, we're already paying $5,250 a year, and it's gonna jump up to $5,500, so it's another $250 bucks and some change. I promise you, if we don't renew this, they're gonna come back and say it's $7,500 if you want it. So we're gonna be paying more. Do I wish we had more time? Of course. But maybe the next time around, we can get in front of this a little bit sooner. But based on what's been said, I think it probably supports renewing the term. Worst case, you get another five years. You don't have to renew it after that if it seems it's unfavorable.
Councilmember Jones?
I agree with both of what you've said, and you spent a lot of time putting this all together, and I really appreciate that. And I do think it's two separate issues. I do know when I knocked on doors, parking is something a lot of people talk about, a lot of shopkeepers talk about. So as a new member, I appreciate the idea of, I don't know how you pull all that information together, but giving us some history and some of the statistics that Marilyn just went over. So we have that and treat that as a different opportunity for knowledge for us, newbies here.
I agree. Mr. Mayor, if I may, so I just did some quick math. Even at 60% usage, which is higher than that lot, they double pay themselves. Those space, those meters pay for that lot at least $10,000. So if that helps at all, just on that little lot, because they're well-used. So and again, we keep the permits out, so. But we can certainly, we would have a whole presentation based on Councilwoman Trent's numbers. So we can have that dialogue and dig into it deeper, absolutely.
Great.
Councilmember Trent?
Well, I mean, lieu of this new information, it does make sense. But I didn't have it, but thank you. We'll, I don't have a problem separating this at this time.
So do we?
Do I drop my motion?
Can do a handle it two ways. She can withdraw the motion, or you can vote it and vote it down and then start doing it.
We don't need to go through that. I'll just withdraw my motion in lieu of new information.
So, so I agree. I mean, with the new information, we need to do this. But I think that the topic of who pays for parking, we've had this for as long as I've been on the city council. But I think with some of these new costs that we've talked about, which are potentially millions of dollars, we're gonna have to take a look at every source, and that's a discussion that we're gonna have to have on this council. So do we need a motion now to approve the lease?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to support the lease.
Motion by Councilmember Sage?
Support.
Support by Mayor Portem Salvia. Madam Clerk, the call, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Wasn't that a nice way the new council works today? We also have receipt of the check register if there's any questions. If not, we have a report from the various boards and commission. At first, there's a report from the Sister City Committee. Councilmember Gould or Trent?
I think it's me. Okay. All right, so there's been a change. We discussed about change of the Memorial Day Parade, and that's what we discussed at this meeting. And a new change of time, change of route, reduction of expenses. And then the foundation take, the Rochester Regional Chamber Foundation taking on those, the responsibilities. So originally, it was going to the Veterans Park on, a memorial on Adams Road. The, for two years, there was a parade going from Adams High School to the Veterans Memorial on Adams Road. But now we decided, several of us decided and did some research, and have decided to move it back where it originally was, from the Avon Cemetery to the Veterans Memorial Park on Levenoy and Avon Road. And so the Chamber and Foundation will take over managing that, which is great. That is great. And that means that they will be responsible for staff executing the items below, setting up committee meetings, setting a budget for the parade, which will be included in the foundation budget. And all marketing will come directly from the Chamber Foundation, and we'll also mention City of Rochester and Rochester Hills as collaborators on this event. So it will be very efficient. We will start at the Avon Cemetery, and then we will head down to Veterans Memorial Park on Levenoy and Avon. And we'll be, I think we start around 8, and we'll be done by 11, something like that.
Will we be able to ride our bikes again?
You might be, you might be. Yes, you may be. And yes, and Maggie Bobbitts, she has been managing the one before, and she's excellent. Their team is excellent at events, as you'll know. This is just a drop in the bucket compared to the parade that you will, you will see on or be a part of on December 3rd, this Sunday. So thank you.
Yeah, I think it's going back to the way it used to be, which I think a lot of us thought was very successful and really got kind of messed up during COVID and stuff. So I, I mean, I'm looking forward to that. And then we can march down.
Yeah.
It's a short march.
It's a short march.
As opposed to a really long one. Thank you for that. Next is a report from the City Beautiful Commission. Councilmember Gould?
I think we did that last time.
Okay.
Yeah, you did, that's right.
Okay, and we will not have a report from Ra-Ra tonight. We have a report from the Historical Commission.
Can I say one thing about Ra? Even though I know I'm gonna, well, I can't say that yet, actually, but I do know a little about it. Chris Kringle, next week, this week, first and the second?
It's Friday, Friday, Saturday.
It's Friday and Saturday. On Friday night, Ra-Ya has a fundraiser with the mulled wine at the back of the tent. We get all, pretty much most of the profits from that. And then on Saturday night, Ra-Ra gets, it's a fundraiser for them. So please come to our tent on Friday and Saturday.
Thank you. Next is a report from the Historical Commission. Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be bringing forward to city administration, the commission has requested a certificate of appreciation for Matthew Surr. In the eight years he's served, primarily focused on Founder's Day. So I'll get that information to you, and we'll vote on it at one of the next two meetings here before the end of the year. And we're very excited. We ordered the next batch of the historical coloring books for the second graders in the Rochester Community School System, and we will deliver those in February.
Thank you. And next is a report from the Pink Creek Trailway Commission. Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a quick update on Bridge 31.7. So we had gotten favorable news from the Michigan National Resources Trust Fund, and it also came with a tap grant opportunity. So when we originally submitted our submission, we scored 345 out of 500. We were allowed to resubmit, and we did so. We made some substantial changes in sustainable materials and some more native landscaping. So we've increased our score to 395 out of 500. We are a bit more confident now that we will be afforded that money. There is a board meeting of the board on December 13th. So we're waiting to see how that rolls out. And I guess we'll have that, would have an update for the December 18th meeting. We continued our discussion on the 2024 budget. As I had mentioned prior, there will be a 3% increase in the member contribution by the municipalities on the trail. That equates to $561 impact to us and to our budget. The Oakland County Patrol Program, since we're on a two-year contract with them, there will be no change. They have advised us, though, that there will be a 10% increase in 2025, so we need to be prepared for that. And then finally, the, in 2024, it'll be the 40th anniversary of the first Rails to Trails program here in Michigan. So there are two events that we're gonna use to celebrate that anniversary. The first is in the spring, and it always starts up at the top end of the trail in Lake Orion with a 5K race. And then for us, on our end, it's always the Labor Day Bridgewalk. So there'll be more information to come with that, but stay tuned.
Good. Thank you. So I have, as you know, with new city council people, we, some of the boards and commissions, we change around in their things. There's still some moving parts, but there's a couple committees I wanted to announce tonight because I know there's meetings coming up immediately where we're doing that. So tonight, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Jones for Ra-Ya and Ra-Ra. And I would like to nominate Councilmember Hauser to the Planning Commission, because we have meetings coming up. So, so those are that. And then we still have a few things going that we'll get to as soon as we can. But there weren't like imminent meetings right now.
What about Finance Committee?
Is there a Finance Committee meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so Council, Councilmember Sage is gonna go to the Finance Committee.
Okay.
Okay. And I know I've talked to many different people on many different things, but we're gonna hold off just a little longer. That's what I have on that. So are there any other public comments tonight from the audience? Brian, anything?
There is nothing, thank you.
Onto General Miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things. First of all, I was driving back from a quick trip up north this weekend, and our people here did a much better job handling the roads than the people coming back from the north. Saw a lot of cars in the ditch on that first snow, it's a little bit tough. So kudos to our guys. Holly said coming down today, she comes in from Lake Orion, and it was like, oh, white knuckling all the way till you hit our city limits, and hey, here we go. Congrats to our guys for handling the first snow. December 1st will be our last swath of picking up leaves. So we're trying to wrap it up by December 1st. You can see now with the snow on the gutters and they're frozen, it's a bit of a mess. So we'll try to get that last scoop and then get the sweeper on and get the streets clean leading into winter here. I'd like to acknowledge Rose from the Building Department, Megan, I'm sorry, Megan's not here anymore. Marcy, thank you, Marcy. Jeremy, Jeremy's gonna be helping us re-picture this room with some brighter colors. Rose got down here and cleaned out all the stuff behind you. We have a closet you can hang your coats up in now. All the tables are stacked nice and clean in there. The trees, we can put some little twinkle lights. We've got, Marcy, on Amazon's Black Friday, they found three matching tables to this wood here with some skirts, appropriate skirting on the front that will come next week, some new chairs for there and in the back. And all this is like on a shoestring, like $135 for things. So I give them a lot of credit. It was pretty sloppy up here, and we were trying to add a little dignity to this room. So Rose did all the hanging of the big red light show. You can see staff and like Donald Hill and the museum are, continue to change that display out in the lobby. And we get lots of really good comments from that. We're trying to keep everything as spruced up as we can around here, and appreciate everybody's work. We've got, we went to a, two part-time people who are cleaning now. So we have staff people, our cleaning company, Alec went through, how many, we tried three, I think, and they just don't seem to get it. So we went to save money and went to part-time people and split it. So now we have DPW, we have the Police Department, City Hall, and the stairwells of the decks are being cleaned on a regular basis now, virtually every day. So it was a good move on Alec's party. We kept trying with these companies, but they just kept letting us down. So just little things inside here, but they save us money, and we're being more efficient in doing those. So, and I think, oh, we, Councilwoman Jones just talked about Chris Kringle, Harkett, obviously the parade, all that good stuff. And then last thing, the DDA had a great event at Festival Trees. They beat last year's funding again. So I missed the, first time ever, I think I missed that, the cocktail part, I heard it went great. They're extremely excited about the turnout and then the people's generosity in doing that. Neighborhood House is filling up their wish list for folks, for kids for Christmas. So they're wrapping that up, and there's not a whole lot of opportunities left, but everybody's gonna get, every kid that's asking to be sponsored is gonna get sponsored, it looks like. So we're excited about that. And Festival Trees, and I think that's it. Yes.
Thank you. I will, I appreciate all the work on the interior. I will say, the City Attorney and I were looking for that table over there. Put our stuff on, it's been there for 20-some years, probably.
I do have one other line, yeah, maybe you want to talk about that, Mayor, but John Fox called me today and said, I just want to get this off my chest. He said, I'm not tongue-tied too often. When I got on the stage and I looked left and right, he was like overwhelmed. So Chief Ceslik has a formula. There's, you can take, we know exactly how, 100 feet wide, 1320 feet long. There's two kinds of ways to calculate density of bodies. It's called, believe it or not, in my world, mosh pit density, which is zero room. It's called, believe it or not, in my world, mosh pit density, which is zero room or extremely dense. So we were extremely dense. Just on that road, there are about 34,000 people. Put everybody in the restaurants, side streets, parking, fireworks, you're pushing 50,000 people. That's not, remember when Dave Van Debeven would come in and Brooks would tell him, we had 100,000 people on fire and I said, no, we had like 15. We figured it out and there really were like 50,000 people here. And I've never seen so many bags being carried around downtown, including myself, my wife. People were buying things, spreading it out. We saw people in wheelchairs happy that they could move around, people with strollers that didn't have to fight that sidewalk and it was so exciting. And David Luellens said he's never seen anything like that. And again, John Fox has been on that stage for years. It was, it was very cool. In closing that road, I know we've probably set a precedent now on the fireworks, we thanked our sponsors, but I think we set a pretty nice precedent moving forward. So thank you, M.DOT, for allowing us to do that.
So City Manager, do you think M.DOT will let us do it again?
I think based on, we had no complaints and we monitored that, Chief George, Chief John. I literally didn't get to enjoy much because Anthony had the drone flying, so I was in charge of standing by the stage going, the bridge is clear, go! Because he didn't want to shoot him over anybody on the bridge. So we timed that within a minute and a half, they got that bridge clean and I, and M.DOT said they were pleased with our performance, how we opened it 20 minutes ahead of schedule even. So I think we have a very, very good chance to be able to do that in the future.
Great. I'll, I'll just say, being on the stage, looking to the left and right, it was completely full. And even Santa said, he said, wow, this is a big crowd today. I mean, you can't argue with that, right?
Can't argue with Santa.
Madam Clerk, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Madam Clerk?
The state legislature has adjourned for the year so that we'll put in motions some of the provisions of the election laws that have been pending. And it sets the date for the presidential preference primary for February 27th, so short reprieve and we're on to the next one.
And I think the legislature from those two resignations is gonna be not doing much for the next three to four months. Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gould?
Yeah, just really briefly, Lanyap was awesome. I'm sure everybody has, was in the room and up here has gone to it. I've been talking to neighbors and other folks around town, everybody loved it. So kudos to everybody that helped make that a go and put that on. That was, that was incredible. Very excited for the parade on this Sunday and I wanted to assure Nick that I will attempt to do my best to maintain dignity up here now that we have a class here looking.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Thank you. Lanyap was truly spectacular. I couldn't stop looking at all the pictures and just really want to thank the police, the fire, the CERT, all the volunteers. It was safe, it was wonderful. And it, to me, it felt so much safer than not having the road closed. So that was just fantastic. I did lose my voice at the end of Lanyap and it's finally back today. I just had too much fun. And just wanted to make sure all of council knows that tradition is that, you know, we walk together in the parade, so I think I can wrangle my husband into being the driver. So unless someone else wants to volunteer a driver, so we'll have a vehicle to walk with. So looking forward to the parade.
Thank you, yes.
Well, importantly, can that vehicle bring us back?
That is the question, yes. Yes.
Or it's a nice walk back. Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some news from out west. I was able to spend Thanksgiving in Denver and I was able to spend an afternoon with Amanda Harrison. She wants to wish everyone a happy holiday, say hello, congratulate all the new and re-elected members. So it was, it was very nice to see her. She misses everyone.
Councilmember Jones?
I just want to say how proud I am to have been voted in by the citizens to represent Rochester. I'm so excited to start working. I loved every minute of the process. I'm happy to say that my comrades that were running, we all worked together. It never felt, felt any negativity. I support a lot of, I appreciate the support I was getting and my family and I'm excited to get going. Happy to be sitting up here.
Welcome. Councilmember Trent?
Yes, welcome, welcome, Councilmember Jones and Councilmember Hauser. Thank you. You were quite, it was quite lovely working with you guys, really nice. Yeah, so yes, I agree, just what Mayor Protem and everyone has said about Salvia, about the Lanyap, it was absolutely amazing. I was pretty close to the stage, but it just kept getting crowded and people pushing in, but everybody was polite and it was a really good time. But, so moving on, we have Tim Crawford is our grand marshal this year for the parade. He is Mr. Christmas. He's a, I think he's, he's like a number two behind Christie Trevorrow loving Christmas. But they'll have a grand marshal party at Great Oaks Country Club. You can, I think there's still purchase tickets available if you want to come and you can get them at the, by calling the Rochester Regional Chamber of Commerce, going to the website. But anyway, I'm excited to go there, to be there again at that Great Oaks Country Club and pretty much looking forward to the parade.
Good. Councilmember Hauser?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you to the people who voted for me and thank you for all the support, particularly the other councilmen and women here who were very generous and supportive and kind with their words and advice. I very much look forward to working with all of you and very much looking forward to working with the city administration. I promise to be prepared, I promise to be present, and I promise to listen. So I'm very much thankful for this opportunity and I'm gonna do my very best not to blow it, so thank you.
Convince you will not do. So real quickly, so first for the, for the new members, we, meetings do last longer than this one. I just want you guys to know. We used to have 11 o'clock where we try to cut it off. We don't, fortunately, we don't go, go anymore. I'd just like to thank all the city staff and stuff for the Lanyap. I mean, it was like so well-run, so organized, the CERT teams, the police, the fire, I mean, it was just so well-organized. And it really felt, with the crowd that size, it really felt safe and friendly and family-oriented, where I think not having it open, it was starting to get a little tight on the road. So great event. The gala at the Great Oaks Country Club, I recommend coming if you can.